And welcome to the Monday, June 3, 2024, meeting of the Fitchburg School Committee. Call this meeting to order. Let's see, we have no executive session. Please be advised that FATV is conducting an audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. I ask anyone in the audience who is recording this meeting to please identify yourself for the record now by stating your name and city of residence. Seeing none, now I ask that you place your electronic devices into silent mode for the duration of the meeting. Thank you very much. And we will do the salute to the flag. We have Mr. James Walsh to lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on our agenda, we have school committee members and student reports. School committee chair report, no report at this time. We have the report of the resource subcommittee.
No report at this time.
And the school building needs subcommittee.
No report at this time.
Okay, very good. Any comments or questions on those two? Seeing none, we will move on. Policy subcommittee.
We met and completed both Section B and C of the policy manual, and we will be meeting again on June 12 from 6:00 to 8:00 to continue our work with Tracy Novick from the Mass Association of School Committee.
June 12, 6:00 to 8:00. Thank you. Any comments or questions for the policy subcommittee? Seeing none, we will move on in our agenda. Student support subcommittee, Dr. Knight is not here, correct? Was there anyone on the student support subcommittee that would like to add any information? Comment? Okay, seeing none. School personnel subcommittee, we have no report at this time. Student representative report, James Cant.
On Thursday and Friday of last week, Goodrich Academy and Fitchburg High School had their graduation ceremonies, so congrats to the class of 2024. Thursday was also the Special Olympics Day at Longchamp Middle School. The eighth grade class departed for their trip to Washington, D.C. today. Preschool parent teacher conferences are being held on Wednesday, if you missed them, on May 29. Fitchburg High School will be having a parade for Pride Month on Friday, so the marching band will be playing through the halls. Fitchburg DPW Day is on June 12 from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. at Coolidge Park, and the last day of school is June 20.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from school committee members?
Just to clarify, the last day of school is an early release day that day.
We also have the 19th off, right?
We have no school on the 19th. Yes, correct.
Okay, June 20.
Yes.
Very good. All right. Next in our agenda, we have approval of the minutes from the previous school committee meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the minutes from the meeting of May 20. Any comment? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that is unanimous. Thank you. Okay. Next, communications. We have the public comment sign-in sheet in our communications.
Yes, moving forward, we will have, when anyone comes up to public comment, there'll be a sheet on the podium for you just to write your first and last name.
Okay, so, anyone coming for public comment in person, we ask you put your first and last name forward, spelling for the record.
That's all we need it for, spelling, just to make sure we have it correctly spelled.
Sounds good. Any questions, comments? All right, great. We will move on then.
We have a couple more communications.
Oh, we have more communications?
Yeah.
Yes.
I just wanted to let everyone know that we have our second annual citywide spelling bee Thursday night. This is a spelling bee with fourth and fifth graders, and it's being held at Fitchburg State in the Conlon Center for the Arts, the Kent Recital Hall. The doors will open at 5:30, and we have our three elementary schools, Crocker McKay and Rangel, participating, as well as St. Bernitz Elementary. So last year it was a huge success. We'd love to see any of you join us. Thank you.
I can't wait to be a judge.
I'm a judge, too.
Yes, you're both judges and also Officer.
Don't miss me.
Anetti over there is a judge, too.
Just like last year. Yeah, thank you, sir.
Fantastic, thank you.
I have one piece of communications, too, Mayor.
Sure.
Just a reminder that we're having our annual community brunch on this Friday, June 7, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at the Fitchburg Art Museum. It's a day for us to thank and give back to all our community partners that helped make Fitchburg Public Schools what it is, and then it's an opportunity for us to kind of network and share ideas. So again, that's this Friday, June 7, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at the Fitchburg Art Museum.
Fantastic, that's in my calendar. All right. Any further communications from school committee members? Okay, moving on, thank you. Now we have the public comment. We had a public comment that was to be submitted to the superintendent for virtual public comment. We're none submitted, okay, thank you. I now invite anyone in the audience that wishes to speak for public comment to approach the podium, identify yourself by name and city of residence, and you're free to make a public comment of no more than five minutes in length at this time.
This is awfully tall.
You can pull it down.
Should I sign in first?
Sure.
Okay. My name is Joanne Kelly, and I live in Leominster. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. First of all, I am a proud parent of a 2023 graduate of Fitchburg High School's Honors Academy. My son graduated third in the class and is currently attending UMass Lowell in the Honors College as an engineering major and is very happy there. I'm thankful for the guidance and the education that FHS provided. Secondly, I am a Fitchburg paraprofessional, and I've been with Fitchburg for almost 10 years. I'm the outreach person for the Longchamp Marketplace Food Pantry, and this year I was the 21st Century After School Programs Youth Venture Champion. Not only did we bring awareness to the marketplace for LMS, but we also have partnered now with Be Positive for animal therapy visits. Currently, I am the academic coordinator for the Bright program at Longchamp Middle School, and the position has been eliminated for next year. I'm here today to give insight into the intensive social-emotional learning that the Bright program has offered our students. Since COVID, the Bright program at Longchamp services students with eating disorders, self-harming, high anxiety, depression, suicidal ideation, LGBTQ+, sexually abused, and those are only a few examples. We've seen a rise in hospitalizations as well. In four years, our data has shown the program's annual enrollment numbers increased from seven to 17, and the annual hospitalization numbers have increased from two to eight. Some may question, how do we know that this program is successful? The answers are proven with the Bright students transitioning back into the classrooms and completing middle school. Attendance has increased, they have achieving honor rolls, and the ability to attend excellent high schools such as Monty Tech or the Honors Academy are possible. I'm passionate about this program and believe in every student. I'm hoping that the district will continue to explore the grant from Governor Maury Healy's office that was given to the Bright network that was designed to fund Bright and bridge programs like ours at Longchamp Middle School. I believe in the importance of mental health programs like Bright to help even our most vulnerable Fitchburg students rise up. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep.
Hey, everyone, I'm Sally Craigan, live at 1138 Oak Hill Road, and I'm actually here to speak about the Janet Craigan Youth Arts Awards, but I didn't want to let the moment go by without saying that the volunteers with therapy pets that I work with directly have been working directly with the Bright program at Longchamp over the past couple of months. And I'm looking at my calendar for next year with the number of pet teams that we have and will be gathering. We're looking to do about 120 hours of therapy pet work over at Longchamp. Ms. Kelly is absolutely correct. I've seen some pretty traumatized kids, and I've heard from kids who have had really difficult backgrounds. So as much as the school committee does not get their fingers right into the personnel work, I do want to speak up about this program. It is amazing. And the fact that Ms. Kelly has, and Principal Pierce and all teachers have welcomed us, shows me how well-accepted the program is and how successful. So averaging three hours a week of pet therapy on Thursdays is the day we're looking to do. We plan to continue, we want to continue, and we solidly hope that you can support these kids, because middle school is tough. And again, the backlash from COVID, whatever kids are bringing with them, it makes an impact in middle school. I see Longchamp as an incredibly successful school with really high stakes, just really, really high stakes. So that's my two cents. I'll be back to talk about the Janet Craigan Youth Arts Awards. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Would anyone else like to make a public comment? Okay, thank you. Moving on in our agenda, we have the superintendent's report.
Thank you. This evening, I'd like to invite back up Sally Craigan. She is here this evening to talk about the Janet Craigan Youth Arts Awards.
Thank you. Jesse, you want to?
Yes. You're going to... Hi, I'm Jessie Olson. I'm the executive director of the Fitchburg Cultural Alliance, who are located right across the street at Main Street Studios. And along with Sally, we, last Tuesday, we celebrated the Janet Craigan Youth Art Awards, which has been an annual celebration every spring except for 2020 since 2010, and named in honor of Janet Craigan, one of our founding members. This award has honored six middle school students from each of the Fitchburg Middle Schools who show enthusiasm and passion for drawing, visual arts, performing arts, as well as literary arts. And we do this because we want to celebrate and encourage our youth to be part of our vital creative community and economy, but also every year we ask the students why the arts are important to them, and every year what comes back is how the arts help them feel better, help them find a way to express themselves when they're struggling to figure out how to do that, but also it just makes them feel good. So this is our opportunity to say thank you, not only to our students, but also to the schools and the teachers who encourage these students and nurture that growth in their imagination.
Awesome.
Thank you, Jessie. My mother, as the chair of Stratton Players, was a founding member of Fitchburg Cultural Alliance, and I'm sorry she's not with us. She was class of 52, Fitchburg High School, loved Fitchburg, loves Fitchburg still. These kids exemplify something extraordinary. It's music, it's band, it's chorus, it's drama, it's writing, it's visual arts, and all of them are multi-talented. So how we'd like to do this, Madam Mayor, if we may, is if it's okay, our first recipient is going to be from Longchamp. I'm going to call the name, and then if you would like to come up, my student from Longchamp, and say a few words, you may. If not, totally fine, you can receive your citation from our mayor, and then please stand to one side, because we want to get a nice group picture at the end, because if we don't see it on a social media, it really never happens. All right, can we call Dale Ann Calder, seventh grader from Longchamp who won for band category nominated by Nat Blankenship? All right.
Do I say something?
Sure.
I just want to thank my band teacher, Mr. Blankenship, for helping me through this and to be able to be honored by him and nominated, and I also want to thank you guys for nominating me. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I ask a question? What instrument do you play?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Just stay right there for a moment, you'll be joined soon.
And from Memorial Middle School, we have Sammy Cruz, who is in sixth grade and was nominated by Phelan Fournier and Nicole Karen for band and chorus.
Man, a few words.
Here you go, Sam.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right, our next recipient is from Sizer School, someone I've known since she was teeny tiny, and I think our mayor has as well. Scarlett Brooks is in the eighth grade, was nominated by Allison Cordio for drama. Do you want to come up and say a few words or say thank you?
Okay, that's all right. And also from Sizer, we have Casey Pennell, who is in eighth grade and was nominated for writing by Julie Tuttle.
I'm also in eighth grade.
All right, seventh grade, correction.
I guess this is just kind of an interesting experience for me, so thank you.
All right.
Seventh.
All right, next we're going to call up Brady Rotzasein, who is a seventh grader nominated by Jessica DeSilva for visual arts. Brady, come on up.
Okay, I could fix that later. Congratulations.
All right, now, if we can get everybody sitting. Okay, now, if we can, let's do this. Can we have you guys, Mayor, Superintendent, can we just have you guys come around here? You're going to make a little conch here. So you guys sit up forward one step. Excellent. And then you're going to do windows like this, like this. You face forward, then you swoop behind your head, and then you scoot right here, shoulders. Excellent.
Feel one spot.
Absolutely. Especially if you're taller. All right, Jessie, get up.
Okay.
Get in there, Ms. Craigan.
Okay.
I'll send it to you.
Thank you.
Parents, feel free.
Thank you. I got three, I'll send it to you.
All right, I just want to do one with you guys, and I'll get that to Jessie right now. All right, one, two, three, smile. Awesome, well done. All right, another round? No, more parents?
Go make some great art.
Thank you. All right, moving on with the agenda this evening, we have Kristin Sax, who is an eighth grade teacher at Memorial, here to talk a little bit about the Middle School Civics Day coming up on June 11. Kristin.
So for those of you who don't know me, I'm Kristin Sax. I teach eighth grade at Memorial Civics, and we're here today, and I'm here with my students, a few of my students, to invite you all to our second annual Fitchburg Public Schools Civics Day. Each year, the eighth graders, they engage in an action civics project. We've been involved in doing this at Memorial since 2018, since the inception of it, and every year I am always, always impressed by what they produce. The classes begin with interviews, talking to people in the community, talking to their teachers, sometimes they call you, and they start to find out what's going on in Fitchburg, what's going on in the state, and trying to find some sort of community issue that they can be passionate about and try to work on. They start that process with the interviews, and then they begin with their research, and as a class, they then start working on what is it they really want to focus on, and they do this through consensus and voting, a combination of the two, and eventually come down to a focus issue that they want to work on. From there is where the action starts, and they start to figure out, okay, what's our goal going to be, who are our targets, who makes the decisions, what kind of tactics are we going to use to try to get to that goal, and they work on that for, they've been working on it since February, off and on, in between, we have Civics MCAS this year, too, so they had to do that, but they've been working on it for a while now. And we have our Civics Day on June 11, which is a Tuesday, from 10:00 to 12:15, and actually I'm going to have Bella, if you want to pass these out. She kind of gives you a little bit of an overview. On the other side has the schedule. And we came here to invite you to our Civics Day. So the schedule is on there, on the other side of it, a little bit of information about it. The kids work on projects like mental health, chronic absenteeism, youth voice, we had a group working on the outdated or rundown portables, I think, what else we have here? MCAS graduation requirements, and there's so many more. Like I said, it's both middle schools, so Longchamp is also working on projects, our school. Last year, we had the high school join us on our Civics Day. This year, we weren't able to do that, they had a separate one. But I also have in there our district report from last year, how many students were involved with it, how many classes, how many teachers, and I know that that number's gone up this year, so when I get those numbers, I can bring that to you also. But I could talk here forever about how impressed I am with, I'm going to have them tell you what they've been working on. So I'm going to have Ablock. Ablock. Do you want to sit over there? So they're going to just tell you a little bit about what they've been working on in this class. Actually, Ablock, the student reps, I have one that went to Boston about a week ago. There's about six reps for each team. Bella went to Boston, and they did an amazing job, and by the way, you got very high scores, I have to give them to you, and they were competing actually against high school students and their projects. So I'm going to let you guys take it over.
Hi, I'm Madison. So our...
If you want to sit down, probably hear you better with the microphone.
Hi, I'm Madison. So our project was about the MCAS graduation requirement. We believed that it caused stress and anxiety on the kids' mental health, so we... Do you like to talk? Okay.
My name is Samir Leriano, and we are currently working on mental health issues and how MCAS contributes to it, the graduation requirement, and why we're working on it is because it to help solve one of the issues contributing to mental health, like among students?
Sorry. Another reason was because we believed it was unfair for ESL students. They are new to our country's language, and MCAS doesn't have very many alternatives to help these kids. When we are working on MCAS, like for Spanish speakers, MCAS doesn't have very many opportunities to help them. They don't have very many alternatives to help kids.
Over half of our school is Hispanic, and most of them have ESL, so we believe that we really need to make a change with that, and we need to make it so they have more of an opportunity. And we have it, so like, we have graphs over there that show the percentages, and the requirements for the alternative tests are very specific, so it's kind of hard for them to get into it.
We also worked with the MTA to get petitions, and we helped get signatures so it could get on the ballot in November. They needed 12,429 signatures so that we could go on the ballot in November and leave it up to the people to vote for it, because legislative did not take it up, so now it's up to the people and if it gets on the ballot in November. And then, do you want to...
You kind of...
Is written by our students in our class.
Thank you. So did you want to talk about a couple, like you have your tactics, you have your op-ed, what else, the petition you worked on, and what else did you do as far as reaching out to people? Did you guys email?
It was up to Jerry, so did we email Kishmerik?
I believe so, yep. I believe you have, Kishmerik had, yep.
We had emailed Rep. Kishmerik about the topic, and he was fully supportive of getting rid of the MCAS graduation requirement. Did we get a quote from him?
Bella and Boston, you guys were passing out the petition, you want to talk about that?
We have a petition going for it right now, so we have quite a few signatures already. We've got some teachers to sign it and some family members of the students, and it's a really effective method to get this on the ballot.
You want to talk about how the petition works and what you learned about the petition process?
Okay, so for the petition process, we first had to get it signed by a minimum of 10 people, and then after, we turned it into our attorney general, and it was announced in September 1, first Wednesday in September. And then, Phil's secretary for state office, who is Bill Gannon, and then we had to get, the petitions, we needed to collect 74,574 signatures, and then it would go to legislative branch, and if they don't take it up on it, then we'd have to get 12,429 more by...
May 1.
By what?
May 1.
May 1st.
Any quick questions for anybody?
You got your 12,000 additional, 12,000 plus additional signatures?
They're working on it right now. They're working on it. They did, so they brought the petitions to Boston, they've kind of gone around Fitchburg a little bit, and just learning the whole process of how the petition works. I mean, there were things in there that I didn't even know, I didn't understand where the number even came from, or why do we have 12,000, whatever it is, having to do with the elections for the governor, if it's 3% of the voters that elected for the governors, and that's where that number comes from. And so it was really eye-opening for the class and for myself, just learning that process of how the petition actually works, and how you get those numbers, and how you have to do it, and especially filling out the petitions, we were very particular about that. They're very particular about, you just have to put the city and then the names, and there's all these do's and don'ts, and if you can't do it, it'll invalidate it if you do it wrong. And so they did do that, and they worked with the MTA, and we handed those off to him, and he is now bringing those to City Clerk and the places to be. But we've gotten Boston, Belmont, Fitchburg, Ashburnham, we've got a lot of different cities and towns in Massachusetts, and so it was really learning the process of how that works.
What's the deadline to submit the signatures?
Was it June 3? We had to send them to the MTA, he was sending them in, I sent them to him yesterday, but I think it's on there, if you have it on there, I think it's June 13, I believe? Is that what it is? It's soon, it's very soon. Yep.
I just want to make a comment that I was in Springfield beginning of May, and someone stopped us with it.
Excellent.
Great project, thank you.
So we'll see you on June 11, then, right? All right, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So this is B block.
C block.
C block, oh.
Yeah, we skipped B.
We skipped B block.
That's a problem on your part.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm Evelyn Crane.
I'm Miss Avella Janay, and our Action Civics topic is later school start times. We have lots of evidence to show that earlier school start times have a negative impact on students' mental health and chronic absenteeism. We believe that later school start times would play a significant role in increasing students' academic performances and just performances overall throughout school.
We also did a form throughout our school for sixth, seventh, eighth graders and teachers, and we got positive results that...
and we got positive results that, that helped support our topic.
Yes, we did a survey and it asked multiple questions about how they believed they would perform better in school, would they think they would show up more or not. And we got a lot of positive responses saying that later school start times would actually help their lives, their lives. We also did, we sent emails to Pittsburgh's District's Representative, Mike Kuzmerik, and Senator John Cronin. We sent emails to them talking about if they could help get support on our issue. And we got one response from, I believe, Senator Cronin's assistant saying that he was going to send it directly to his office because it like goes straight to their assistant before it goes directly to him. So he said that he would get that through and we haven't gotten a response from Representative Cronin.
There's also a bill already supporting this for middle school and high school students, Bill 4212, and which helps us, it supports our goal and topic.
It talks about, I believe the start time for middle school and high schools would be 8:15 to 8:30. It was issued by Dylan Fernandez, who is also represented for a different district in Massachusetts. But if you look on the Massachusetts State's Legislature, it will, it'll show the bill and it is currently in committee, I believe.
What was the bill number again?
4212 HD.
4212, okay.
Did you have a suggested start time for-
I believe it was between 8:30, 8:15 to 8:30, no later than 8:30.
No later than what, 8:30?
Yeah, no, only for middle school and high schools.
What time does high school start?
High school starts at what, 7:30-ish?
7:30, yeah.
And middle school's 8:05?
8:05.
Long Joe's 8:05, Memorial starts at-
Memorial's earlier.
Memorial's earlier.
Memorial's at 7:30?
They're the earliest.
Oh.
What was the recommended time for high school? Was it the same, 8:15?
Yeah, they were both around the same.
They're both the same.
I'm hoping to get like 8:10 to 8:15.
Yeah, anywhere just like around 8 o'clock because a lot of times kids that wake, that get to school, because also kids have to walk a lot in the winter, it's especially difficult for them to go through the snow and stuff and they have to get up earlier to walk. And for buses as well, they have to get up really early and make sure they get on time for buses. So I feel like later school start times would help them so that they're more awake for the first, like around two classes of school.
We also want to have it so kids get in and out in between other schools, like at the elementary school. It's, the elementary school starts around 9.
Reinhold, I think it's like 9:05.
It's at 9:04, 9:05.
9:05.
So it would be in between Reinhold and say like Long Joe or something like that.
So would give more time for bus routes because if it's all at the same time, then I feel like bus routes would clash, so if it's just like a little bit of a distance then it would be more efficient.
Yes.
What time do you think would be good? Have you settled personally?
Yeah, around 8:15.
8:10, 8:15.
And I can attest to them being sleeping first two blocks.
You can vouch for that.
Yeah.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing.
Yeah, why don't you both come up and then you guys can both bring your boards up. They're missing their other reps.
They go by themselves.
I like it. You got to do that.
You got to do that.
Yeah. I was saying, I was telling the team after the budget.
You need, you straighten out your last one so it faces more us, so we can see it.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Arielys Jimenez and in civics class, we are working on mental health days off for students. We want, our focus issue was excuse absences because it like goes on your record and it could affect the person. We noticed that other states have gotten approved for mental health days off. Massachusetts is one of the ones that have not got approved yet and we believe that it will increase attendance rate. In California, in California, it has increased by 30% in 2016 to 2019. We believe that our attendance rate would also increase if we were able to get mental health days.
And your tactics, you guys have done, what have you done for tactics? They're still working on this one a little bit, so they're still in the process.
We just have to email.
Yeah, they've been working on some emails. Actually, they're working on a survey too, which was very similar to the survey that we gave today about the youth, not youth commission, that's your project. There was a survey that they had to take today, but it was about mental health. It was very similar to what they wanted to do.
My name is Ben Ram and my class's project is lack of youth voice in Pittsburgh and our goal to try and bring that up is to bring back the youth commission. It used to be active, it's been inactive since 2014. And it actually came up in public comment a couple meetings ago, asking about it. And that's how we kind of got the idea for our project. So, so far, we've emailed almost every city council member, I believe, and only one of them responded, Amy Green. She basically said, we obviously have a Pittsburgh school kid sitting on the meetings, but we believe that bringing back the youth commission could influence and help the city of Pittsburgh bringing youth ideas. And it wouldn't just be high school kids, there would be seventh and eighth graders sitting in and, you know, proposing their ideas. And we have also found there is interest in this. We've got, we've gone to classrooms and gotten names for people who would be interested in this, doing this. And we've sent out surveys and stuff, so.
And this project really, as we were talking about it, his class is a really big class. It really kind of embodies the entire idea of Action Civics and having a youth voice. And so they've done some research, we, I say we because I have to send the emails for them, but they write them. They emailed the former mayor, Lisa Wong, they, former Dean Tally, city council, and nobody's gotten back to them on as to why this is no longer active. The only thing that we heard was in public comment that there was just no interest and what they found was that there actually is. And so they really want to work on this. My thought on it also was, and I don't usually get into their projects with them, but I thought it would be great if Pittsburgh Public Schools could partner with Pittsburgh, the government, and work together and have some sort of deal with the eighth graders or the high school and really kind of bringing those students up through the pipeline and kind of bringing them to the youth voice. If there was, you know, no interest, we have seen that there is. And if we can somehow marry those two together and bring that to Pittsburgh. They did notice that there was a lot of cities and did you want to talk about the Mass General laws in the Pittsburgh?
So, in Pittsburgh code, there's also a law in Massachusetts which basically talks about the youth commission and all of the terms and stuff. On our board, right there on the side, we have the city code of Pittsburgh, which basically describes the terms and what the youth commission actually is. And there's also a Mass law, I believe, describing, we can have one and how we can have it.
Fantastic.
Yeah, and there's so, there's a lot, and they looked at a lot of other towns and how they worked theirs and what the age limits were, and they were all different. The Pittsburgh one, I believe it was 12, was it 12 to 17 originally? 12 to 17. And so they were trying, one part of their project is they have to find out the root cause of why this is happening. And we weren't able to get ahold of anybody and find out that information. But we wanted to come up with solutions. Is it a time at the meeting? Like is the meeting at 6 o'clock and students can't do that? You know, could it be like a Zoom meeting? Is it just a matter of there really wasn't interest at that time? Whereas now that we have this eighth grade civics project, plus the high school also does a civics project, I feel like there's a lot more interest now and I think that it would be really great if we could somehow partner with that.
Absolutely.
There's no longer youth commission in Pittsburgh?
Nope. So the last one was 2014 and as a matter of fact, it was former students of mine that were on it. And I'm not sure what happened after that, I couldn't get ahold of them either. So we don't know why it's no longer. I don't know.
Yep, our office, we've been, we've been researching how to reinstitute the youth commission and we figured after the budget, then we'll, we'll work together to try to, try to roll this out.
I mean, they would definitely, we've got kids here for you, they're ready for it, so.
Any information that you gathered that would be good to share, if you can send that to the mayor's office, then we can take a look at that.
Because we, we did have it and it's kind of like just-
Yeah, dispersed. Yeah, if I may, I know a couple months back, Ellie Rivera, who's a former Pittsburgh graduate, he went through the school system, is finishing his masters now and is very interested in, he was the one that spoke at public comment. So I think maybe next, whenever, whenever June 11th is, Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Yeah, we can speak, you know, I'll get in touch with him so we can maybe make that connection because I know he'd like to be a part of that as well.
That would be fantastic.
Absolutely.
I had a quick question about the mental health days. You said that there's currently some states that allow mental health days. Do you know how many mental health days they allow and what states closest to us allow that?
Mostly two mental health days per month and-
Two per month?
Yeah.
Really?
I think it was, was it two per month or was it two, I mean, three to six months or something like that? Is that what you asked for me?
I think it was two per month.
Two per, okay.
There's-
Is that Maine? Is it the red one?
The red, sorry. The red, I don't know if you-
I don't get so wrong.
Yeah. The red is the one that is allowed, like they're accepted. And-
So it looks like Maine is the closest one to us?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the bills that are getting processed is our state, but it didn't fully like, we don't know what happened to the bill currently.
Thank you.
I just want to make a comment. It's so nice to hear you speak and you speak and the others speak, yeah. It's encouraging. Do you have other friends that, that would be interested or?
Personally, yes.
So this is, this is nice, this is good.
Yeah, and we would have more students and these, they did volunteer on their own. I just asked them if they would like to come with me while I, you know, invite you and they absolutely wanted to do it. They have DC tomorrow, so a lot of students couldn't come tonight because they're getting ready to go to DC tomorrow.
Big day tomorrow.
Big day tomorrow, yeah.
My daughter's going on.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, yeah.
That's great. Well, we'll let you get home to pack.
Thank you.
One, one last comment. I'm very impressed by all the presentations and the amount of research, research that you've done. I'm, I'm a retired librarian and I was a reference librarian in colleges and universities and some of the research that you had to do to find out city ordinance and state laws is very impressive and probably more thorough than some of the students I used to help who were in college. So I, I think you should give yourselves a pat on the back because that, that type of research is, is difficult and difficult to find. And I'm impressed with what, not only what you found, but I'm also impressed with the topics that you all selected, very relevant and pertinent topics that affect all of you and your predecessors. So thank you very much for doing this. And on the 11th, it's at Memorial, correct?
Yes.
Correct.
Yes.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving right along, we have the last two presentations this evening from our directors. The first presentation, we'll hear from our Director of ESL, Eva Kelly, in addition to our Coordinator of Family and Community Engagement, Luisa Fernandez. They're here to talk a little bit about community engagement and donations.
So thanks for having me back. I get the honor of coming twice. So exciting. So I'm really happy to be here tonight to talk about another great group of individuals that contribute so much to the Pittsburgh Public Schools and that's our parents. So this is Luisa Fernandez, she's the District Family and Community Engagement Coordinator and she's going to help me present and I'm just going to go through some quick slides and talk and then she's going to tell you about all the great programs that we've been holding for parents. So these are some traditional models for parent engagement and I think most of you would be familiar with them, school councils, bed packs, I mean CPAC, LPACs, parent conferences, teacher organization and newsletters, right? So a lot of this communication and engagement is kind of one-sided. We're kind of just sending out information, right? So the goal is to set up like a two-way communication where parents are truly engaged and giving us feedback and contributing to the education that we're providing their students. So we've made some additional investments in parent engagement over the past several years. So we've added Luisa's position, she has created an amazing community resource guide, been out there talking with community members, finding out the services that are provided in our community and sharing those with parents. Assistant Superintendent Roach has set up the Safety Task Force to give parents a voice in setting up safety procedures and processes here in the district. We are redefining the role of the school home liaisons and we, Luisa and I have been working with them all year to raise their skills and knowledge about community resources so they can share them with parents. We've also increased the health supports for students. I know Ms. Rivers is here, so I wanted to mention the health services that they've increased and added so much telehealth and supports for our families and students, as well as our comprehensive translation services, our translation printers and our effective translation system, which anyone in the district can use. So we also, this, this year, right? This year? Yeah, and I think last year also, we went to the Better Together Summit and you can click on this when you receive the slides and it tells you all about this program. We brought community members, we brought parent liaisons and parents. Assistant Superintendent Cologne and I presented about parent engagement and its journey, our journey to that here in Pittsburgh. We've also added adult ESL classes, which are a direct response to our LPAC meeting where parents ask for support with that and that's why we've been holding those. And we also have district school and community programs, which you've all come to often and we appreciate your support. In the future, what are some of our plans? We'd like to set up a district climate survey to establish how people are feeling welcome, how belonging, how we're doing with welcoming and belonging across the district. We're also working with the Equity Imperative to increase our services and making sure that all students and families are able to access the same supports. And we're also doing, this is my favorite one, it's a Family Institute for School Success is a new parent program we'll be doing in the fall. And this is in collaboration with the Department of Education. It's a curriculum for a six-week program for our families. We're starting at the kindergarten center, the Early Learning Center, South Street, Early Learning Center. And the idea is that we're going to provide this training for our parents. Every parent is invited. We do a six-week program and the goal is to train and empower those parents to then spread this work as they move on to elementary schools and eventually middle school. We also are working on a district welcome center. We've talked about that and added that as part of our Student Opportunity Act funding. So we'll be in the process of planning that this coming year and over the next three years. And we'd also like to increase PD for our administrators, just supports and services and how we can continue to help them and engage our families. So now I'm going to pass it over to Luisa because these are all the community partners she's been working with and working hard to support us and our families. and working hard to support us and our families.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for having me. So I just want to mention, you know, different programs and organizations that have been supporting us during this school year. So the Fitchburg Museum of New York Communities, Spanish American Center, the Department of Public Health, MUG, Feature Housing Authority, United Way, Worthinge Booster Mission, Area Mission Society, Debs Beds, Future Police Department, Fitchburg Police Department, Unity Helping Hand, Community Health Connections, and the City of Fitchburg. So, you know, last year, we had the opportunity to do so many festivals and so many programs in collaboration with different agencies, and we want to highlight that today. So last year, we support, and we, we were part of the FACE, which was a cultural festival here in Fitchburg. Last year, Feature Public Schools in collaboration with, I don't know, I'm nervous.
Why are you nervous?
I don't know.
Of all people.
In collaboration with the City of Fitchburg, we celebrate our first, like, big Latino and Hispanic heritage event. It was very nice. We have so much fun. We also collaborate every year with the police department to celebrate the Fitchburg Night Out. We are working already on all these events for this year, and this year is gonna go even better and bigger. We are as well part every year of the Committee for Trick or Trick in downtown and Fitchburg Civic Days. I noticed that every year, more and more families are participating in the parade, and, you know, they want to walk with us, and that's very important and meaningful for me, because, you know, I want they feel part of all these good things that are happening in our community. We also participate in the Uruguayan Festival, in the Mon Festival, in the Housing Authority Back to School BBQ. We go to different religious centers, you know, when they invite us to set a table and always pass information, and usually free books and Fiji toys. You know, we went to the City Health Fair. We try to go to every single event that Sally put together for Be Positive. And, you know, our goal is to be present, and if the families cannot come to the school for any reason, we go where they are. That's our goal. Always reach out to them. There is a couple of collaborations, well, more than a couple, actually, of collaborations that happened, you know, through the years. So Worcester Area Mission Society reached out to us because they want to put together like a preschool, you know, kind of playgroup together in our schools, but because we didn't have the space, you know, we tried to be creative, we connect with MUG, and this is actually happening. So our kids in the preschool waiting list, they have a place to go in the MUG building, and they get a free lunch, they get a free book, and they get a free gift card every Friday. So that's for our students. Then, you know, caring for kids, blessing in a backpack, they were ready to move to another city because they couldn't find, you know, a coordinator, and we say, no, 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 you're not going anywhere. So, you know, we support them, and now they are here, and they are providing every Friday a bag of snacks for the weekend to over 300 students in Fitchburg Public Schools. The Fitchburg Art Museum provided a donation to Debs Beds, and since June 2023 to May 2024, 59 students from Fitchburg Public Schools received a free bed. You know, I'm part of this program, and I volunteer, and I try to go to assemble the beds every time that I have the opportunity. That was our last family, a family of four, and they got brand-new beds, brand-new mattresses, brand-new pillows, everything. As you know, the Feature Museum, you know, is a big part of Fitchburg Public, of the Feature Public Schools families, and in 2023, we distributed 1,350 envelopes across seats events to families in the, in, in the community. Every event, we pass 225 envelopes with a $25 gift card to Market Basket, or Walmart, Walmart did in December, a free pass to the museum and our project, and a flyer with information about our community resource guide. The event concluded with a fair, where we have information about housing, employment opportunities, health. Well, this was our community brunch last year. As Mr. Thompson mentioned, it was, it's an opportunity, you know, to say thank you to our partners, but it's also an opportunity, you know, for them to connect to each other and, you know, make new connections. So I hope you all can come. Last year, this was, this was one, was our first event with the Parks and Recreation Department. So we put together this outside activity. The name of the, of the program was Feature Wildlife Wonder, and we invited Natural River Watershed Group, and they brought like a microscope, and the kids had so much fun. So I want this to become like a tradition during the summer, and something that we can do together with the families every year. Another very special program that we developed with the Art Museum was the Jun Arte, and it was an opportunity for our ESL students to have one-on-one sessions with an artist, Gabriel Sosa, and they developed a public art project that is displayed right now on Main Street. So that was amazing. The families had the opportunity to gather after the presentation of the art, the, the public, the art project on Main Street, and it was very fun. Well, Better Together, Mrs. Eva already talked about it. So this was another great program that we have last year. So the name of the program is Family Portrait. So the museum, in collaboration with us and the university, put together this picture scenario for families to have like a holiday picture for free. So 27 Macon Event of families have the opportunity to have, like, you know, that picture that you sent to your family and your friends during the holidays, Market Basket gift card, and we mailed the printed pictures for them to, you know, send it to their family members. This was a beautiful, beautiful program. As far, as, as part of being more, I'm not gonna say open, but more well culturally responsible, we developed, this is our second year, actually, of putting together this program. The name is Thankful for Our Cultures. So, you know, we have diverse presentations from different cultures, and we end with a turkey dinner for families, trying to integrate, you know, what they like to do and their culture, what we like to do here.
And the turkey dinner was delicious.
It was very good. This is our second year.
Cranberry sauce.
Yeah, this is our second year, and I feel that everybody, every year is growing and growing. I have to mention that the Fitchburg Fire Department is being wonderful with our students and our community. So two years ago, we started, we started with the Fire of the Elves, which is a program where the fire department does like a drive toy. So they collect toys for our students, and this year, actually, Holy Hill Farm, like, decided that they want a part of this wonderful project, and they donated 50, like, real Christmas trees for families. We contacted, you know, our Macon Event of families, and we delivered Christmas trees for them. And our way to say thank you to the fire department, so we cook for them during the holidays. So it was very nice. They are being amazing with us. Winter Wonderland Breakfast, it was like very nice as well. It's an opportunity for families to come and get our free books, you know, meet some of the staff members, and this year, the, the marching band came. This was super good, too. So we, I think we had over 300 people for the February Vacation Free Ice skating opportunity. We are, actually, we have so many people that next year, we are trying to figure it out how to do two turns because it was so crowded, crowded. But even the parents have the opportunity to go to the ice. So it was very, very nice. Pizza Party, one more time in collaboration with the Art Museum. This year, Kelly Morris and the art teacher, Crocker, read a book about, you know, yourself, and how you see yourself, and the kids see their artwork. It was very nice. We are trying to create more awareness about mental health. So we have a, a program named Let's Talk About Mental Health, where we invite Gandara Center and MUG to come and talk to, and talk about anxiety, trauma, ADHD, and behaviors. And this year, we give the parents the opportunity to be part of a book club, and we read the book, Bijon Behaviors, and we have some of the staff members volunteering to host these meetings for parents, and we have the book in Spanish as well. Trying, you know, to, 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 to support our local shelter and our students and their families, we create a food pantry route. So every other Thursday, I go in the van, and I pick them up in the shelter, and I bring them to Jeanne's Helping Hand, so they can pick up their food, the food that they like, and they can cook. This is a way to try to support them and help them to be independent in the, in the moment that they move out of the shelter, so they know where they can go for food, right? And they have other resources over there, so I'm, I'm very happy to do this. This is very nice. And the families are so kind and thankful. So I hope, and, and next year, we're, we're trying to find, like, you know, ways to support even more families, not just the shelter ones. Family Day this year was super good as well. It was raining, but we made it. We have over 500 people. I'm gonna show you a quick video of the event. It's very quick. We are finishing. It was very crowded.
I had a good time at.
I had a good time, too.
It was very nice. I'm finishing. Our ESL program, I'm so proud of these parents. So this is, we, we already host 11 sessions. We pass already 370 seat certificates, and, you know, part of our LPAC group, parents are taking those classes. And, you know, these, for this session, we are trying to do a field trip with the parents to make it more special for them, and, you know, everybody reach out. We, we have for this session, I think, 104 people enroll. So I, I have a lot of hopes on this. And we, we help those families when they reach, you know, the third level. We try to encourage them to work with us. So this is a great opportunity, not just for them, for us, too. We receive a lot of donations, and I kind of like already talked about this, but, you know, WAMs, they donate books all the time to us, City United, Backpacks, and Saint Givern Basket, Elite Construction, every Christmas, they do the Toys R' Class, they do backpacks, the Feature Fire and Park Recreation Department, coats and clothing, Laminster Credit Union, the Chamber. Thank you.
Everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us. Yeah, we really, we beg John to let us come.
May I make a?
Yes, beg. Toss in my arm.
Wait, no, but we want to thank you and all of your support. Whenever you, anyone comes, they see you. People, the families love that. So we really appreciate that. And, oh, yes.
I have a comment to make.
Okay.
I want to know, are you only one person, or are you like a dozen?
So we're trying, that's part of what we're trying to do, is like, have more and more individuals that work for the district, the community, and even the parents, join with us to hold these events, to continue this sense of you belong here, you're welcome here, we're here to meet your needs.
Thank you.
That's the theme.
And that's really what our, one of our goals is of, you know, developing that Community Resource Center. So, you know, it's not just Luisa, it's a team of people that not only do these resources and donations you see happen at different parts of the year, happen all the time, and have this one-stop place for families to come to get the services that they need. So this will be our goal that we start planning next year, and hopefully will launch in year two and three. So stay tuned for more.
It's part of our work with the Home Liaison, too, to build their capacity to participate and engage and, and run these programs. Yep. Makes sense?
Yes.
Yeah, all right. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. I am gonna ask if I can make a quick switch in the agenda this evening. I would like to ask our math director, Tammy Chandler, to come up at this time. Sorry, our SEL presentation's a little bit longer than, than our math update. This evening, we have a quick update from Tammy Chandler. She's here just to talk a little bit about our geometry curriculum and some updates that we need to make moving forward for next year.
I'm gonna do a quick update, so I'm hoping that when it's all over, you'll accept it, and we can move forward. I think I might have. All right. Good? All right.
Is your computer on, Phil? Oh, no.
Don't touch anything.
Don't touch it.
Okay, so we have an opportunity to update our geometry curriculum for the high school. As you know, when I started, we started with Phase One, which is really look at our pre-K through ninth grade, updating the curriculum. Right now, our 10th grade geometry and Algebra II have been around for about 10 years. Some of it, we're pulling lots of different resources, and it's not really meeting the needs of where we are in 2024. So we went ahead, and we have been piloting. So basically, this is kind of the next phase of our work. We were hoping that Great Minds would continue, and they would be ready to expand to geometry and Algebra II, and that doesn't look like it's the case. So it was really important between Justin Alex, he's the math coach there, and myself, we started to reach out to other districts, look at some programs that were out there, and Open Up Resources, really aligned with what we have with Great Minds. We wanted to make sure that we were meeting the needs of our students, all of our students. We wanted to have that real-life application, and just the resources were all in one place. How did we pilot the program? We got the entire geometry staff at Fitchburg High on board. Every single teacher that teaches geometry, special ed, and ESL, they unpacked the curriculum by unit. There are nine units for the geometry, and there's connections beyond the course. So it's not just geometry in silo. If they're ready to connect to calculus or Algebra II, that's embedded. Open Up also grows up to Algebra II, so it was really important, if this works and Great Minds does not go up to Algebra II, that we could have that same structure and routines. There's a five-practice chart that's really about anticipate, monitor, select, sequence, and connect. All those connections that we talked about at my last, when I was kind of sharing some of our curriculum. And it's really important that we continue with the discourse. We want our student-to-student discourse to continue to happen. And so they piloted lessons, assessments. There was a good range of questions that would help us understand the misconceptions and where our students were, that would connect to not only our MCAS, but some of our other pieces that they need when they go into college. This is just the three P's of success with Open Up. They want to produce high-quality curricula that's open and accessible. They want to provide access to community and professional learning to support successful implementation, and they want to partner with schools to achieve extraordinary outcomes for every student. So it is rated high-quality through the DUCI Curate. That's very important. Any of the other programs that we came about, we just tabled those. It's research-based. It's aligned to our common core. It's embedded with supports to meet the needs of all of our learners. Entry and extension, the tasks are engaging, opportunities to reason logically, again, around those standards of math practice, and there's equity in the technology. So it was important that there was a wide range of technology that meets the needs of where we are in 2024. This is just a few things around the assessment. This is just a few things around the assessments. There's daily exit tickets, there's practice problems, there's a quick quiz to formally assess student progress, there's the end-of-the-unit written assessment, there's self-assessments, which, um, we feel is missing from Great Minds, and we will get to that point and include it ourselves. How do the students themselves self-assess where they are in their learning? And then, um, this is the performance assessments, real-world situations. In this case, they have to plan a gazebo after Unit One. Not only do they have to plan the gazebo and the whole performance task be around that, the other piece here is, this is what the student is thinking, do you agree or disagree? And that connects to our partnership with routines for reasoning and, um, and really getting that student voice out there. Family materials, it's, uh, you know, they have the family letters, they have a website for them, there's also videos that have been made to help with homework help, uh, or any type of lessons that can, um, that they may need additional support. The glossary is both with examples, the definition, and then they can annotate right on there. We are looking to purchase the, um, student materials, just like we do with our Great Minds, because we have reached out to the students, and I would say 90% of the high school students really want to step away from the computer. They want to be able to use hands-on, either manipulatives or the student books. Um, so their consistent lesson structure still repeat development of con- concepts from concrete to abstract. Not all of our students are where they need to be, but we want to make sure that we're spiraling up to where they need to. That small group, um, lesson and discussion, and then opportunities to apply mathematics to real-world contexts. We did reach out to our students. We have the student voice wanting to know, uh, what do you notice about the curriculum? How does it compare, and how would this help support your learning? So these are just a few, um, takeaways from them. We thought it was really important that not only do we hear from, you know, the teachers and what's happening, but what their voice is on that. And this is what's next. If you approve tonight, we're going to provide, uh, professional learning. I've already been in touch with the company who will provide professional learning to the entire geometry team. Justin reached back to me today to, to say that they were all on board to participate in the professional learning, so no one will be left behind on that. They'll work on a scope and sequence for the 24-25 school year. We're gonna continue to progress monitor using the assessments and revisit quarterly looking at student work. We're gonna continue our learning walks on discourse, implementation, and the routines. We'll purchase the student consumables, and we will try to pilot next year Algebra II. And if that's works, then we'll, I'll be back here next year at this time to see if it's fine for the Algebra II. I want to just end with, we will be progress monitoring. I think that I said this about Great Minds, just because we're updating doesn't mean that we're, like, set on it. It has to meet the needs of our students. We have to continue to progress monitor, we need to get in there and, and talk to the students, and do our learning walks to ensure it's not missing anything. And it's important that our curriculum has all of those pieces so that we're not going to all these other resources.
And that's one big thing now, Tammy, is we have a lot of teachers using their own created materials in addition to them pulling from all kinds of different resources. So it's not co- consistent with all the geometry teachers who are teaching 10th grade geometry.
Right. And in their defense, that's what we had at the time.
That's what we have.
And a lot of it is homegrown, and some of it's pulled from the old Eureka, and it's just not, I mean, that's 2014, we're in 2024, and we really have to think about where our students are and where they're going.
Um, could you just back up? The, we had a Great Minds curriculum?
We had Eureka. It started with Engage New York, and it was Eureka. And that's what's in, was in the schools, so then we updated to Eureka Squared, just to see if that's where we wanted to go from K to nine. And that worked, that's worked out for us. Great Minds is not, in the near future, going to update to geometry and Algebra II, and we really can't wait for our, um, to update our geometry. So we had to find something that was similar with the routines, the discourse, and having an entry and an extension, um, for our students.
So we had Eureka, which is by Great Minds, but we didn't have the whole Great Minds, just the Eureka part for the math?
When Eureka started, it was by Engage New York.
Okay.
So it was Engage New York, and that was something that we adopted. Middle school had CMP, high school had Engage New York, and it was, um, then it was purchased under Great Minds, and then they had Eureka and Eureka Squared.
And how long has that been?
Eureka Squared, so we've been, is this year?
From the time that I came on board.
No, Eureka Square, this is what, second year using?
This is our second year. And we reached out to all the teachers on, um, Eureka Squared, because everything that the teachers were asking and the students within the curriculum, they actually updated Great Minds, Eureka Squared, listening to the teacher. The consumables, the assessments, um, and some of the tasks that are embedded.
I just wanted to be able to support, uh, also your presentation. Tammy and I work together, uh, quite regularly. Uh, and so one of the things about this particular curriculum resource is that it is deemed high-quality by the state, um, for six through eight. And when you look at each of the areas that they assess when they're, uh, defining high-quality, it actually meets expectation for every single component, including overall score. So it's standards-aligned, it's grade-appropriate, it's content, uh, standards and organization, it's accessible for students, it's usable for teachers, and it has an easy classroom application.
And when we speak to the college, we are, we've connected with Mount Lechuson, and as you know from my presentation before, with Pittsburgh State, Dr. Barbado, she's also been within the classes and really thinking about what we need for them to go on to college. It's really important that there's that communication, not just at the high school, but where it's growing, because our students are staying here from kindergarten all the way up. So having that consistent curriculum is equally important.
So Eureka Squared is not approved by DUCI?
No, it is. They just don't have the geometry yet, or the Algebra II.
They haven't up, they updated Eureka Squared up till ninth grade. So we do that kindergarten through ninth, and they said, oh, we're going to have Algebra II and geometry coming, but they haven't gotten there yet, and we just can't wait another year to, to move on.
We have to move now.
So we had to find something, because that would be a whole nother set of students that we're just kind of pulling.
So we're gonna change to the Open Up Resources from K to?
Nope, just for geometry in the high school, just for that course.
Yeah, just for that course.
So K to nine will be Eureka Squared.
10th grade, yeah.
10th grade will be Open Up, and hopefully Algebra II, but keeping in mind that the name is, and the vendors are different, but we made sure that we found the structure being the same. We wanted the same routines, the lesson structure includes a launch, a learn, a land, it has real-life tasks, there's problem sets for them to practice in. We wanted there to be some kind of consistency. Back before, we had CMP at the middle school, and then the, um, Eureka, and there was such a disconnect. So the students were going through middle school with CMP, and then they were trying to transition into the high school into Eureka. And now we have this consistency.
So Eureka, then Open Up Resources, then something else in 11th grade?
Nope.
Nope.
Well, right now it is. Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think, first, thank you, because, you know, having been involved in at least 25 meetings about this, those last couple of years at Pittsburgh High, we were really talking about the transition to Eureka Squared, and I think everybody was super excited about how it was gonna be K to nine now, right through Algebra I, which is typically the, the freshman math class, and that geometry would then follow the next year, and then Algebra II. So it, that hasn't happened, they haven't been able to produce what they had told us they were gonna do. So I think this is a great solution for that continuity of instructional strategies, a thinking curriculum to go along with, obviously, math is very content, especially at all levels, but certainly in high school, very contents-heavy. So I, I'm really excited that there's a solution now that will maintain that K through nine work that's already been done, and, and a lot of the efforts that you and the team have put together, so.
And I think it's important that it's grounded in the standards, and we say this a lot to our teachers, it's grounded in the standards and the standards of math practice. This is a curriculum, but we're still looking at our standards and our standards of math practice that drives our instruction.
I think it also says a lot that the entire geometry team supports us.
Yes.
When you have a group that everyone is for it, and they're already willing to commit themselves to training in the summer, I mean...
And with the, um, high school, we have a lot of the ninth-grade algebra teachers, they're only teaching algebra, and that's been a great shift for this year as well. Where before, some of our high school teachers were teaching one algebra, one geometry, one Algebra II, and now you have an algebra team. So that consistency of really being able to differentiate the learning for the teacher as well is equally important.
So is this a temporary, 10, only 10th grade? We're only talking about 10th grade?
We're only talking about 10th grade.
And is this temporary until Eureka Squared comes up with their thing, or are we?
No, honestly, um, if Eureka does move forward with great, with geometry, we could definitely look at it, but based on what we're seeing, it's, hits the standards the same way, it hits the standards of math practice and the, um, activities. So, um, we could definitely revisit that. If they do, I would say it's two years that before, based on the conversations we've had with them.
And then, so what do we do in the 11th and 12th grade?
So it's Algebra II.
Algebra II, and they have a, um, they have a textbook, and then they do calculus and, um, quantitative reasoning. We just purchased all of those through, um, the electives, and then we'll have the MVP program that's also going to be using that, um, same program.
And that's a different curriculum.
Can I just respond? Yeah, typically in high school, it's not atypical for, because there are such specific courses, you can't, you're not gonna see a curriculum that covers every single math course or every single social studies or every, right? So it, you do actually, um, while in elementary and middle school, you'll see curriculum adoptions. In high school, they're typically textbook adoptions. Um, so it, it, there is a little bit of a nuance and difference, um, at that grade level.
We wanted to step away.
But I think Eureka was trying to do that, but they're not.
Right. And we'd like to step away from the textbook, right? We, we still want that hands-on, that collaboration, all the things that we do when we get into college, the problem-solving, the group, um, one-to-one.
No, I, so going from the one curriculum that goes up to grade nine, it's not an issue then going to a different company, education company, to the geometry?
No.
And then Algebra II, your junior year, and when I was in high school, I had geometry as a sophomore, but then they had, we call it advanced math for seniors, so it was...
No, in fact, um, I think that was the part that happened before the pilot, is really taking the time to find a curriculum that matched, again, that lesson structure and those routines, so that the students are getting that same experience in the class. It's not teacher-directed, you're listening, you're, you know, doing the work, there's that stepping out of the middle, as we call it, so that the students are interacting and working on, um, these tasks together and individually. There has to be time for independent solo work, so that they build that stamina as well, and that's where that discourse piece comes in.
And the other part of this, Ms. Jeffrey stated that the entire geometry team is on board, and I think it's also where you have, where you said earlier, people who taught geometry kind of, you may have taught it one way, I may have taught it another way, you have that consistency, so you know that your students, whoever they have as their teacher, will be, they'll all be studying the same.
Same. If I have to move to your class, and when we're looking at student work, which is really going to drive, um, our math, actually, our whole, all of our curriculum, looking at the student work to also help with decision-making and adjustment of instruction, we're all looking at the same task together, the same exit ticket, and being able to look at that. Where before, there might have been one that was found here or, or in another spot.
And finally, I think the fact, and this has come up in other courses that are being taught, you know, what they're doing with civics, that there's a real-life project that they have to plan.
Yes.
So it's like, why am I taking math? I'm never gonna use math, but you don't realize that every day you use it, and depending on what you're gonna do, uh, I think building a gazebo, you get all the geometry, angles, and everything else. It's, so that when your gazebo is done, it's, it's straight.
Yes.
And I think that's great that they understand that this will be applied into real life, maybe not in a couple of years, but at some point, it'll come into play.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I have another question. I appreciate your patience with my questions.
Oh, my gosh.
For asking.
I don't, I'm not a curriculum expert, so...
No, it's good.
You know, uh...
And you're a parent, so it's important those, those questions are asked. You know, being a parent from two students in Pittsburgh, those are, we want to hear those questions as well, and, and talking to other people so that we do understand. Right now, it's the Common Core, oh my gosh, but there's other pieces to it, right? So I appreciate that you are asking questions.
Right, so this, uh, open resources, um, why aren't, is, do they offer a K through nine, um, you know, curriculum? Why, why, why do we, is it because it's a change from what we've always done, and the students don't, wouldn't, um...
We don't need it.
That transition might be difficult?
Yeah, and I don't know if you would, it's... I think it's best to pilot one way, not the other way. So since we already have grounded in our three years, you know, Eureka Squared, and we're like, here we are, and we're finding success, it takes three years when you start a new curriculum. So I think we would try this first, and then if, through the time, we would go backwards. Um, but to shift the whole piece would probably be counterproductive.
And then, so just so you know, we adopted Eureka Squared, this is the end of our second year now. So typical curriculum implementations are about six years, so we wouldn't be looking at switching their K to nine curriculum until, what, four years from now, so.
And, and we're always looking at it and revisiting it.
And just to add on, Open Up is currently listed as a high-quality resource for six through eight. It is not listed as that for K to five, so, you know, those are things that...
This is not high-quality for K to five?
It's not listed yet in the state, right? Like, these are things that sometimes, uh, curriculum programs, if they're not listed the first time that they do a review, they try to do revisions to update themselves...
To get there.
To get there, exactly. But at the moment, only the six through, um, only the, uh, upper grade levels are listed as that at the moment.
And we've been there in Pittsburgh, where we've done, like, CMP and, and investigations, and it's just a difficult transition for the students as they leave out.
And Eureka Squared is high-quality K through nine?
Yes, it is.
But not high-quality 10?
They don't have it yet.
They don't have it.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
And they were supposed to have it by now, and they don't have it yet.
Is there any opportunity for a math genius to, to rise to different levels? Do you do?
So, um, they have where it spirals up, so there's always a connection up to the other maths, it's not in silo of geometry. So in each unit, it might connect up to calculus, pre-calculus. There's always that going on.
So somebody with this ability wouldn't be frustrated? Every once in a while on TV, you see 11-year-old getting a doctorate or something.
No, that's a good question. No, it's all there. And there is an entry, like I said, there's an entry and an extension for all of the units, which is important that we have. Thank you.
All right, I think I get it.
All right, awesome. If you have any other questions, or you think of anything else, you can let me know, Glenda know, Tammy know, we'd be happy to answer any questions. And you can keep, can they keep these if they would like, or do you need them back, Tammy?
No, you can keep them, and then we're, um, we are gonna start looking, if it's all approved, we are gonna start looking at a few things and how our professional learning, I want to get that on the books, but keep those so that you have some time, and then...
I can get some other ones as well.
Thank you very much.
One, one quick comment on, uh, Mr. Thompson has put together a really great team of coordinators and directors, which are so needed to really tie everything together, K-12. It doesn't happen at grade levels or individual teachers. It really needs that director to pull everything together and tie everything together. So we're very fortunate to have a good team of, uh, administrative team in the city. Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Yes, thank you, and we're...
Couldn't do it without him.
Excited to all be together and connect our work on a daily basis, so.
Takes advantage.
All right, and if there's any questions, email or let Mr. Thompson know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Last but not least, so this evening, uh, we have our Director of Social Emotional Learning, SEL, Dr. Brendan Keenan with us this evening. He has some guests with him this evening. He has a teacher of social emotional learning from McKay here with him, Jenna Roberts. And in addition to that, I'd like to mention that he has two, uh, colleagues with him this evening that are joining us in the audience that work with him very closely, um, because this work, um, you know, blends into the work that they, they do. We have our Director of Nursing and Health Services, Pam Rivers, here this evening. Thank you, Pam. And also our... And also our Director of Pupil Services, Rowan DeMach. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, Superintendent. Nice to see everyone tonight. My name is Brendan Keenan. As John said, I'm very excited to be here to present. I just started in August in the district here, so really glad to talk a little bit about social emotional learning. I'll actually have Jenna just quickly introduce herself. You'll be hearing from her a little bit more later.
So my name's Jenna Roberts. I teach social and emotional learning at McKay Elementary, as especial as traditionally you would have seen, as we still see gym, art, music, and all of those things. But we also have at McKay, social and emotional learning. I've been in Pittsburgh for 10 years now, but I've been an educator for 21 years, and this has always been a passion of mine, so this kind of just happened organically, so I'm really excited to talk about this and for you guys to learn more about it.
Great. So empathy is a big skill in social emotional learning. So empathy for all of you, we've reached the 90-minute point of the meeting, and you've heard a lot of things, so I promise you that this will be hopefully engaging and to tap into some of your experiences in the past. So this outline looks long, and I know I'm competing with a beautiful day outside, which you can see behind me, but I, you know, we'll start out with the activator activity, just thinking about your best teacher. I'm not going to ask you to share out, but you're just going to think about that. So we're going to look at the three big ideas, the big ideas of social emotional learning, because it's a buzzword that's kind of thrown around a lot, and I think we need to have a real, clear understanding of what it is. Looking at the conditions for academic engagement. And then we're going to highlight, as Jenna said, a few district practices that we've done this year, and one of them is the McKay Trusted Adults Pilot. And then just quickly, we'll preview what's next for this work in Pittsburgh. All right, so this is, I'm not going to ask you to share out, but I just want you to think about the best teacher that you ever had, so bring them into your mind. So we're going back in the past, kind of a rapid subject change here. What did they say or do, and how did they make you feel? So as we're going through some of this content related to social emotional learning, just think of that person if you can, and I think it'll help ground what's happening here, to realize that SEL really isn't anything new. It's been happening since schools have been operating. I think it's just a new term, newer term. Okay. So I might go through some of this a little quicker, but you will have access to the slides after. So I want to start out with some kind of underpinnings of why social emotional learning even exists as a practice in schools. So this comes from a book called Holding Fast, and it's about not just schools, but creating resilient organizations. And I'm just going to read a little bit here. So people best grow, heal, and learn in the context of meaningful relationships. They go on to say that students learn best in relation to caring teachers. Patients heal best when they experience themselves as cared for by nurses, therapists, and physicians. So this really is a primary determinant for how well needs are being met for people that are serviced by those. So it seems kind of obvious, but it's nice to hear it stated. And looking at social emotional learning, we are going to actually look at a definition of it soon. So we would look at, and this comes from Engaging Schools out of Cambridge. They do a lot of work on school improvement, and they really see SEL as foundational to school improvement. So building a cohesive community is at the heart of school improvement and academic engagement. Trust and respect are those essential elements, and as a sense of trust deepens, when students feel safe and confident, they do much, much better. Trust emerges when teachers cultivate relationships, or really being deliberate about building relationships with kids. Of course, the teacher's always the one quote-unquote "in charge," but we can still do that in a really relational way. And these qualities of dependability, predictability, and the whole list at the bottom there, are really, really important to think about. I imagine those trusted adults that you had, that we thought of your best teacher, they probably had a lot of these qualities that we see listed on the right there. I know certainly mine did. So I'll go through these kind of quickly, but academic engagement, again, coming from engaging schools, it's sustained learning that involves students emotionally, cognitively, and behaviorally. So it's not just a technical pursuit, it's actually tapping into their emotions and their heart as well, and that's when students learn best. I'm going to put these all on the screen at the same time, knowing there's a lot here. But these conditions are really what's essential for students to learn well, to learn consistently, and become independent learners. I'm not going to read all of them, because you'll have access after, but I want to highlight a few. So when students feel competent, confident, and able to persist, they give their effort, and they feel like they can do it. And I'm really struck by the student presentations that happened tonight. We could not have asked for a better lead-in to this. I don't think that was planned, but maybe it was. But hearing about mental health and just the interest that students have in mental health, it really just shows how important it is to them. So anyways, just, their effort was clear in those projects, which was great. Looking at the yellow one there, I feel connected, included, and cooperative. Then we have their participation, and they feel like they belong. Belongingness was mentioned in a couple of different presentations, and we will be looking at ways to measure that as a district. And then the final one there, I feel invested, responsible, and accountable. You have my commitment. So that, these are, when these come together, that's when students really thrive in terms of learning. And as we look at improving schools, these are really essential things to foster. All right. So a little bit about school district culture, I'm not going to read all of these again, but really, you know, imagining what we're going for here as a district, again, I'm new to the district, but I've got a pretty good sense of where we're headed, and where we are now. Looking at building a sense of belonging, connection, and safety. The second one, differences are explored with a sense of curiosity, humility, and appreciation. So really looking at our diversity as a strength, which we heard in a few different presentations tonight, which was wonderful. Conflict, that middle one, is resolved proactively and in ways that restore relationships and increase empathy. You're going to hear empathy a lot in this little presentation. This does not say that conflict should be avoided. Actually, conflict can be really productive, and we can come to common ground by having productive conflict. The last one there, trauma-informed care, safety, predictability, and control. So really understanding that adverse childhood experiences, we have a lot of students and families who have experienced those, and providing this in a school setting, safety, predictability, and control. Students knowing what they're coming into every day, that's a really nice way to create a safe environment for our students. And, you know, I didn't take notes on all the presentations, but when you're tuned into these things, you notice it when people talk about it. And there were so many times in the presentations tonight that these things were brought up, which is wonderful. Okay. Again, knowing you're probably at your saturation point, we're just going to do a few more technical things here, and then we'll talk about practices. So the definition of SEL, and this is one that is by a really reputable group, Castle, they are really the leaders worldwide in SEL. Won't read the whole thing, I'll read the top. It's the process through which children and adults acquire and apply knowledge, attitudes, and skills necessary to. You see those five categories down there. Those will come back a little bit later. So emotions are a big part of this, setting goals is a big part of all this work, empathy, again, is coming back up. And it gets to making responsible decisions. Now, this framework is really important for us to think about. So looking at the outer ring of homes and communities, so SEL doesn't just exist in schools, it's really supported and bolstered by our community partnerships. We heard about our community partnerships in the previous presentation as well. Schools are definitely where that exists, and the classroom is really where this work takes off, and that's where curriculum and instruction happens, in these five domains of self-awareness, self-management, responsible decision-making, relationship skills, and social awareness. Okay, so I'll just, I'll keep that there for a moment. So it's not enough just to have these broad categories. Going to go a little bit deeper, still, into the different categories. Under self-awareness, there are different competencies, so knowing ourselves is a competency for that. Going further over, we would see target behaviors. So I'm aware of my identities as a human being, a learner, and a member of the school. I'm aware that my beliefs and mindsets impact my capacity to learn and be skillful. So these things are observable and measurable, and that's a really important thing to keep in mind as we talk about SEL. It's not just the warm, fuzzy stuff, it's actually observable, research-based, science-based. All right. Equity, another overlay that's really important for us to think about as we do this work. You know, I'm biased, I'm the Director of Social Emotional Learning, but I really think that SEL is essential to us doing equity work well. So it's a powerful lever in caring and just, inclusive, and healthy schools, support all young people, and reaching their potential. So we really want to keep that in mind as we work to promote equity here in the district. Okay. So getting into the practices, which I think is important, because we were in like theory land for a while, but that only holds interest for so long. So let's talk about some practices. Boiled down to the most basic practices, we have these three here. So welcoming, these are three signature practices from Castle. So imagine going into a classroom as a student. Ideally, you would have a welcoming inclusion activity every class time, every class lesson, because it would give a predictable way for students to engage in the learning. Engaging strategies, those are just good teaching strategies that we would get to see in the district, that are just part of regular teacher training. And then an optimistic closure, so ending on a positive note, and really summarizing what happened in the lesson, where are we going next? Okay. So boiled down, that is the most basic kind of, the heart of SEL, we would say. So just in terms of the, some of the work we do to support teachers here, so we may not have time to talk about it, but we have a lot of overlap now between the new teacher induction program, and then trainings that I've been doing with them. One little activity we do is to look at unsupportive questions versus supportive questions. Good questioning techniques can really be effective in engaging students. So first, the unsupportive ones, you can see the list here, and you can fill in your own. Why do you act up all the time? What is your problem? Like, these kind of things would increase defensiveness and actually get a student potentially upset and escalate them. Where there's supportive questions, that we challenge teachers and all educators to think of for themselves. So what helps you feel welcomed? Just read a few. What do you laugh about at school? Because fun really plays into this, learning should be fun when it can be. Who believes you can succeed? So these kind of things get at how we care about kids, and wishing the best for them, and trying to tap into their strengths. So it's just a little example of an activity we would do with teachers, so they can understand how to do this work. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this, but we do want to talk a bit about trauma-informed care, because it's something that exists in really all domains. Healthcare really has been leading the way on this. And in a nutshell, it really means putting practices in place that are good for everybody, safety, predictability, control, but especially good for people who have experienced trauma. Because with trauma, we won't go too deep tonight, safety is usually compromised, the predictability in a chaotic environment, and a lack of control. These are like the opposite things that are experienced when somebody has a traumatic experience, or multiple. So we want to create environments where we, there's an antidote to that, there's the opposite experience. And that's where resilience really can come into play. Again, I know I'm going quickly through this, but I think this is the beginning of a conversation, you know, in terms of SEL. I want to mention too, so even though I'm new to the district, and this position is new, you know, the work was being done for years and years, so Pamela Rivers behind me, and Rowan DeMach really paved the way for this work to be happening. So two examples of that are Second Step Curriculum and the Positivity Project, which are already in place in the district. We have Second Step going on at South Street, and the Positivity Project going on at Crocker, being very well-received. So I just want to mention that there are curriculum that are happening at the Tier One level for all students, and it really is transformative to those schools. And as time passes, and we're really laying the foundation for SEL, you'll be seeing, and we'll probably come to you to, in some cases, ask for permission to bring these programs in, just what we did with math. So just a few examples there. And this is a, just a little bit of appreciation for the funding that you've all approved. So we have really robust counseling staff, and that is really, those are two groups, the guidance counselors and the clinical interventionists, that I've worked a lot with this year in many ways, in terms of professional development and consultation. So we have 46 total counselors, and that really, in addition to our school nursing staff, school psychologists, family liaisons, really creates a strong student support team. So I just want to give some appreciation to you all for approving that funding. It really does help us, and it helps our students, most importantly. Okay. So getting into district practice highlights, I'm going to kick this off, and then I'm going to have Jenna come up and talk about the experience in McKay. Okay, so we are always looking for opportunities to bring in new initiatives that will meet a need in the schools. So this year, with the help of Jenna Roberts and Mike Hillman, our SEL lead, we put into place a Trusted Adults Pilot that you're going to hear about, and you're going to see the results of here. So I'll kick it off. So I mentioned ACES. So those are adverse childhood experiences. So they're associated with an increased risk of mental health issues, and adoption of health-harming behaviors. And an access, access to trusted adults, caring adults in school builds resilience and mitigates the impact of ACES. So basically, and this has been replicated time and time again, one trusted adult in the school setting is an enormous protective factor for students. It really buffers them against the negative experiences of having a traumatic experience. So that is, it's a very simple intervention that we can do that is, we'll say, budget-neutral, as I speak to the school committee here, but also that can be very transformative to students. So as Jenna comes up in just a moment, I want you to think about your trusted adults and some of the words that you would have used to describe them. This is our theory of action that we use in this, I'm sorry, some of the black font's a little hard to read. But basically, if the faculty, staff, and administration understand the qualities that students are looking for in them, if McKay students have at least two trusted adults in school, and regularly interact with and receive encouragement from them, students will learn better, they behave better, they feel like they belong at school more. Staff will also see their positive impact, which is a really important thing. You know, when you're identified as a trusted adult, it's really moving, when you know you're that go-to for a kid. And they will also increase, experience increased job satisfaction. Okay. So it, we're actually, through this, we're hoping to help the students, but also help the staff, which would contribute to school culture. Okay, so you've heard a lot from me, I'm going to pass it over to Jenna, and she's going to take this through the next few slides, and you'll see what the students said.
Thank you. Does anybody need to stand up and stretch move? I feel like I needed to run a lap or two around. So I just want to revisit back to what he was saying, that I was reading a book called The Deepest Well, and it was all about the ACES, the adverse childhood experiences. And in there were six things that we can do to help the kids, but the number one thing that can help our kids be most successful is a trusted adult. We did this with the adults in the building, but through that, I did talk about adults outside of the building, because I thought that was just so impactful, that one adult can change the entire trajectory of a student's life. So we worked with 687 students. We developed this lesson. I will say, we do the Second Step curriculum, and we revisit and talk about trusted adults a lot through the curriculum, it's weaved in throughout. So I'm going to just go quickly through, this is what the kids actually participated in as their lesson. So this was one through five. Granted, it was a little bit different for a first grader through a fifth grader, and we had lots of conversation, discussion, and turn and talks, but I'll quickly bring you through what they went through. So we had our learning targets and success criteria. We wanted to explain the characteristics of a trusted adult, and also understand why having that trusted adult is important to being happy, supported, and successful. We went on to discuss what is a trusted adult. So we did a quick turn and talk as to, just when I put up trusted adult, what came to mind for them. And I liked to give them the power right in the beginning, which is why we have the U capitalized. Like, this is, you get to decide, this is your voice, your decision, you tell me, I don't get to tell you. We talked about some of the characteristics that are commonly found in trusted adults, that they care and love you unconditionally. And we went into that, like, what does it mean to be loved and cared about unconditionally? If I make a mistake, are you still going to care about me? And we discussed that. Also, that the trusted adults have clear boundaries and expectations. That doesn't mean they're soft. Like, these are still the expectations, and we're going to hold you to them, but that's because we care about you. Also, good listeners, honest, and reliable. There were a couple of quotes that we went into. We went over who they could choose, this was especially helpful for first and second grade, like, they wanted to just think their classroom teacher, but we discussed, there's lots of other staff in the building. And then you could see the sparks going, oh yeah, I really love that custodian, what's his, you know, so it was like really cool to see them think about who else they could choose. We also talked about why was this important? I really wanted them to be invested in giving me these names and why. So we talked about that we wanted them to feel safe at school, and know that they had somebody to go to. We also wanted them to realize how valuable they are and important, and that we have big news, and sometimes you just come in really excited, and you want to share it with somebody. Who was that person you would want to share that news with? So this is what the first and second grades' template worksheet looked like. They just were to draw a picture, which were adorable, I should have brought some photos, and then the trusted adult. and then the trusted adult. And then if able, they were to write some of the characteristics underneath, why do you trust them? What about them makes you feel safe? So this was the whole school, and this was quite intense work to plug that in, and I have to thank the guidance counselors for helping us. This is a word cloud, and I don't know if you're familiar with what a word cloud is, but each word that you see, the bigger it is, the more it was written. So this, as a whole school, you can see that helpful, trustworthy, caring, kind, loving, were the biggest ones, nice. But it's just really quickly-
My mom.
What was that?
My mom.
My mom, yeah. Yeah. And that kid was writing that, she reminds me of my mom. So like, she's my school mom, which is what a lot of them said. It was really sweet. So first grade, you can see my mom is even bigger up there, right? And love and loving, they just felt love from those adults that they wrote down. And then quickly, just over to fifth grade, I liked how it kind of changed, and we see the word helpful. And oftentimes, they came back to, well, she helps me, she helps me, he helps me, he's trustworthy, I know I can go to him if I need it. So this is their voice and their, their data that they gave to us. So that's that.
That's the McKay Trusted Adult Program?
That's the McKay, yeah, we did that at McKay. So I just wanted to real quick say too, we heard that mental health weaved in throughout all night, and I just want to say thank you to everybody that's up there. Pittsburgh is doing amazing things, and it shows through everything that we have seen tonight, so, thank you. Thank you.
Okay. And another thing to highlight too, and thank you, Jennifer, for presenting, it was a really great opportunity to overlap between central office and schools. Like, so we worked very hand-in-hand, which was wonderful. We're always looking for those opportunities to provide support directly. Okay. So just a few more things to do here. Just want to highlight a new program here that is for the school counselors that I developed called the New Counselor Mentoring Induction Program. So this is done in conjunction with Becky Mackey, our coordinator for that. But we realized that counselors really have specific professional needs that need to be carved out, so we developed this program. So we had individual sessions that I facilitated, and each counselor had an assigned mentor as well. So there's a lot of reasons to do this, it's just good practice, it is required, but beyond all of that, we want to make sure we're supporting and retaining people too, because the work of doing school counseling now is incredibly challenging. I was a school counselor for years, I skipped the part where I tell you what I did in the past, I'll get to that in a moment. But we really want to make sure that we are locking arms with our counselors, so they know we're with them to deal with these complex issues. So this was a session that I led with our new teachers, actually. So we designed the new counselor program, so two or three times a year, they're actually with teachers as well and learning with them. So this is a session that was around classroom management, that was done with mentors and mentees that were teachers. And this is just a list of the topics that we did with our counselors. Actually, so, sorry, these are the topics with the teachers as well. So each of them got a handbook that had practical resources that was really designed for new teachers, to make sure that they had what they need going into the classroom. This was our celebration a few weeks ago, just, it was great to see everybody in the same room over at Pittsburgh Art Museum. And then looking at the Compassion Fatigue Workbook, that's something we brought in as well. All right. That has to do with, that's a term that, it's basically secondary trauma, and it's by working with people, families and students who have had traumatic experiences, there is an impact on the person who's in the helping profession there. So we are, we're bringing that topic to the top. And just quickly, school counselor professional development, so that, again, was happening before, and we've really even stepped up our efforts there. So this is a session that we, that was district-led at Pittsburgh State for all of our school nurses and counselors on suicide assessment and intervention, which is a very, very important skill to develop and refine. Riverside Trauma Center provided that. So looking for these opportunities to go across disciplines and come together for professional development, just makes good sense, and it's great being with the nurses for those sessions. All right. I know this is a crash course, okay? We're in the last section here. And I, you know, hope to be back again to tell you where we're going, so, or where we are. So where are we going with SEL School Culture Climate Work? So this comes directly from Superintendent Thompson's entry plan and the results here. And I was, you know, we see opportunities for growth and reflection that are related to my role, related to school culture and climate. So we see attendance here, discipline, social-emotional learning and mental health, which we heard a lot about tonight, and equity with the Equity Imperative. Trauma-informed care, so we're looking at trauma trainings and the emergency planning, community of safety, communication and safety handbook, so I'm heavily involved in all of these things. In terms of elevating student voice, which is something we heard a lot about tonight, we've had in place the DESA Assessment for elementary and middle, so that's been in place for a few years. The survey that was mentioned tonight at Memorial, we did at Memorial, Long Show, and the high school, was the Youth and Community Survey. So that was done this past week and this week, and we had a lot of students participate, I'm waiting for the final numbers. I think what's important to mention on the YCS is that, this is really important, so we always want to make sure that the community is, has informed consent, so like, parents are able to know what they're signing up for and having the choice to opt students out. So the way we did that, in a, I think in a culturally competent way, we survey, so all the surveys were translated into our primary languages. The permission opt-out form was in all of our primary languages, just to make sure that people truly understand the questions being asked. So that was very well received, and it went well in the schools as well. So that is a survey that's come back, which we're happy to see. It's based on a CDC survey, and it will really help us understand risk-taking behavior that students may be engaging in, so we can better understand how we can intervene, or if we should intervene, or maybe it's a community group that would do that. Panorama is something we will be adding shortly, and that is, there's two parts to that, so there's a data portion where we can actually see student data on a portal in real time. The second part are the culture and climate surveys. So we have the access now to student surveys, to family surveys, so caregiver, and also to staff. So you'll be hearing more about the rollout of that, it is in the entry plan results as well. So again, that's like data, because that, when you ask students their experience in school, we learn so much from them, and I think we really need to tap in them as much as we can, because, as we heard from the presentations tonight, they tell us so much that we may not have thought of before. And just mentioning, kind of on the side, I was interviewed by four students at Long Show for their mental health assignment, and it was incredible what they came up with. I was blown away at this focus group they led, so insightful, and I left there learning from them. So when we can do that more, it really empowers them, it helps them, in some cases, make sense of their pain and difficulty and put it into action. So that, we skimmed the surface here. So this was not quite everything that's going on, but again, we want to at least give you a little bit of where we are now. I wanted to just, you know, make sure you knew who I was and that I'm available as well. It just, you know, I, I mentioned to somebody that I might skip over the introduction of myself, because I don't like talking about myself, but my background, I'm a social worker by training. So I entered into education as a paraprofessional, then a special education teacher, school social worker, assistant principal, principal, district director of social-emotional learning. And the piece that I'm going back to as far as experience now is a restorative practices coordinator that I did for years in an urban district. And that piece really helped me understand adult learning and what adults really need to be, to have professional development really impact their practice. So, so I'm really glad to be in Pittsburgh. Directly out of my undergrad, I worked in the Pittsburgh community, actually, as a respite care worker in people's homes, so, so glad to be back and be back in the community here, so. Anyways, know that was a lot, I think we did okay on time and-
Good job.
Happy to answer any questions at all.
Yeah, go right ahead.
One question is, how was it decided that the SEL program would be at McKay and not at Crocker or at Reingold, or, just curious?
Sure, it was just logistics, to be honest.
Okay, okay.
When we did some redistricting a couple of years ago, we had seven classrooms. So McKay has seven first-grade classrooms, seven second-grade classrooms. And so then the principal had decided that they wanted to do seven specials as well. And like I said, it happened organically. She knew this was a passion of mine, I was teaching health at the time, and she came to me and said, would you like to do SEL in isolation by itself? So I was happy as could be, because that was like my dream job that didn't exist, and now it does, so that was great.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
And also, thank you both, and thank you, Rowan and Pam, for, I know you didn't get to speak tonight, but I know you've been involved in, in working together so that something like SEL program is successful and meets the needs of the students we're trying to reach. Thank you.
Just to mention too, Jenna is an educator by training too, so this idea that, you know, social-emotional learning can be done by teachers with the proper support, and it's not all counselors doing that work, so it's another powerful example.
Where is your office?
It is on the fourth floor at Central Office.
Oh, you're on the fourth floor of Central Office?
Yes. You know where to find me.
Yeah, I'm going to find you. You, you really evoked a lot of enthusiasm. I'm so empathetic with everything that you said, and actually getting down to what the situation is with, with life, if you can, at least be helpful, because it's all going so rapidly, it's like, and we don't know all of the factors that are, that are influencing us. But I've often thought of what an opportunity somebody like, like you would have here, because we're, we're, we could be leaders in the country, leaders in the world, if we learned how to work. You see what I'm saying, you have the same aspiration, yeah. I think it's a cauldron, right? It's a perfect situation.
And looking at, yeah, like, how to coordinate this work, you know, is really what a director's role should be, and, you know, I'm a musician in my other life, so I think of like conducting an orchestra, like, that's kind of what a director does. We're not necessarily playing the instrument, but we are helping everyone to play theirs.
But you're recognizing things like, words like trauma, and so many, I've just probably overwhelmingly affected by trauma. And even to begin to soothe those, those anxieties, or whatever, you know, it's good work, really good work.
Appreciate that. And also to recognize where our ability to intervene ends in, community partners can then step in too, and that's a really thriving part here in Pittsburgh. And I came from the community partner side of things in Pittsburgh through luck, so, you know, that's a really important thing too, because sometimes families feel more comfortable going to a community partner for, to work out private things, really sensitive things, and that's something that's important for us to recognize and respect.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you for your time.
So for the social-emotional learning that we've got, we, we educate the educators and the guidance counselors, we have some curriculum in a couple of the schools as a, like a special, an actual class. What do you see this moving towards into the future? How do you see this being better integrated into all the schools for all the students?
Yeah. Yeah, and I think it's looking for opportunities, like we did at McKay, we saw an opportunity to bring in an initiative that now we can replicate at other places. So I think it's important to, and I have this on my office wall, if you've come to visit, keep it simple, is what I have there. So like, we really need to like boil us down to basic practices and not add necessarily anything new, but to help teachers understand what they're already doing that's in service of social-emotional learning, which is happening all over the place. We have walkthroughs in the district, and my lens is this work, obviously, and it's happening everywhere. It's happening sometimes very clearly in classes that are carved out, but then it's happening with educators who may not have formal SEL training. And the people that you were thinking of, your favorite teachers, almost definitely did not have formal SEL training, right? I mean, because none of my educators did, but they were doing it, they were building relationships. So I think it's tapping into what's already happening and making those connections, and then looking at how we can explicitly build those skills in a developmental way from pre-K to 12, so that students launch into college or career ready to go, and they have what they need. And I would say honestly, not all of us have what we need at, you know, 18 or whenever we do graduate, we develop that over time, but getting them as ready as possible through, I would say, a wraparound mentality, that we're all there for kids. That, I mean, you may want to add a piece to that.
Yeah, it's like we used to do something called morning meeting, which is a great way to bring in some of these skills and ways to bring in these open circles of discussion and things like that. It's a very natural thing that a lot of the teachers are doing, so bringing that in. And when you were speaking, it just made me think, like, I can't tell you, and I'm really not making this up, how many times a fifth-grade student has said to me this year, Mrs. Roberts, can I teach my parents this? And they're being so genuine, and I said, you absolutely can. And we talk about them being kind and empathetic when they're bringing this to their parents, but that goes to show me how valuable this is. One, they can recognize the skill that we're talking about, and two, they can recognize that, that this is important, and they want to teach their families then about it too. So I think that's huge.
Any other questions for Brendan?
Thanks again, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to share a comment, you know, this year, we have had, as part of our team, Special Ed, ESL, and also we have Brendan who joins our curriculum team. And really, anytime we're sitting around the table making decisions, I think one of the things that I really appreciate is Brendan always brings the SEL lens into the conversation, because we really can't do curriculum unless we're thinking about all the needs of the students and how we give them access to the work that we're doing. So I just wanted to share, you know, say thank you, that I appreciate you and having you on the team, and it's, it's really been a great resource in our district.
It means a lot, appreciate it.
Nice.
That's a good optimistic closure, as we talked about as a signature practice, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you.
So, you know, just kind of concluding our series on directors this last several months that I've had, and asked all the directors to come and present, you know, being here now for five years on the school, you know, at Central Office, on the school committee here, I hope you have a better understanding now at all the work that's happening throughout the district on teaching and learning and SEL and nursing services and special education and ESL and community engagement, right? We had a lot, and I hope you have a really clear picture. It's not just me, it takes a village, it takes a team, and this is my team, and this is the work that they do, and I am very appreciative in the work that they do. So I hope you have a better understanding of exactly what goes on in Pittsburgh and all the great work that's happening, so. All right, last piece here, a couple donations this evening. We have, first donation is to the Pittsburgh High School from the Pittsburgh Rotary Club and Carol's Dairy Barn in the amount of $365. This will go to the students who received the FHS Resilience Award, and it will be in the form of ice cream vouchers to Carol's Dairy Bar.
Ooh.
And it's about a 40% discount for those students. The second one is donation to the Pittsburgh Public Schools McKinney-Ventle students from the South Street Early Learning Center, PTO. This is in the form of 25 new scholastic books for McKinney-Ventle students with an estimated value of $200. And last, the donation to Pittsburgh Public Schools for Farmleigh Day, the event that happened a few Saturdays ago, from Samantha Cormier. Samantha donated several balloon arches for the event with an estimated value of $550. So those are on for approval this evening. And then a couple other housekeeping pieces this evening. You need to vote as a school committee on the, the person who will represent you on the CAPS Board of Directors, for CAPS Collaborative and also Keystone Collaborative. So we need a nomination for that. When you get to that, that is action item 24-398 and 24-399. And then last but not least, we had a snafu last time on the numbering of our action items. I need to change two action items to the correct number. Those were items, numbers 24-384 and 24-385. Those need to be changed. 24-384 needs to be changed to 24-393. And 24-385 needs to be changed for, to 24-394. And just the numbers, no content. We apologize, that was labeled incorrectly. Back to you.
Thank you, Superintendent Thompson. Okay, very good. So we have action items before us. I would suggest that we bundle 24, 395 through 397 and take that first.
I'll make a motion that we bundle 395 through 397. Second?
Motion at second to take 24, 395 through 397 together. All approved?
Approved.
Approved the bundle.
Okay, that's unanimous. And so we have the bundle before us of the three donations.
We approve the bundle.
Second?
Second.
Motion in second to approve the bundle of donations. Any questions or comments on the motion? All approved?
Right.
Any opposed?
No.
I'll take-
I'm opposing, I'm sorry.
I'll take that, I'll take that as unanimous.
Yes, yes, sorry.
Very good, okay. And we now have a recommendation for a nomination, 24-398, for, to serve on the Board of Directors for the CAPS Collaborative.
I'd like to nominate School Committee Director Peter Stevens.
Second.
We have a motion in second to nominate Peter Stevens for the CAPS Collaborative Board. That would be 24-398. Any questions, comments on the motion? Okay, all approved?
Aye.
Okay, and so I believe then now we do have to approve the, that, or is that?
Yeah, you can approve that now.
Now we, now we need to actually approve it? Okay. Now we, now I ask that you, for approval, for 24-398, for Pete Stevens.
Approved.
Approved, okay. All right.
Just so, this is correct, do we have to make a motion again to, for 24-398, approve School Committee's recommendation to nominate Peter Stevens to serve on the Board of Directors for the CAPS Collaborative?
For the nomination and then approve the nomination.
Yes.
Okay, second. All right, and-
Logistics.
We don't want another one of these at the end of the meeting here.
We don't want to mess up and have to do it next time.
Right. So any, any questions or comments on the motion? Okay, we, I'll take that unanimous consent to approve Peter Stevens to serve, to represent us on the CAPS Collaborative. And next, 24-399, we need a recommendation for a nomination for the Keystone Collaborative.
I'd like to recommend, approve School Committee's recommendation to nominate Rosemary Reynolds to serve on the Executive Board of the Keystone Collaborative for the 24-2025 school year.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second to nominate Rosemary Reynolds to serve on the Keystone Collaborative Board. Any questions or comments? Okay, I will take that under unanimous consent. And now before us, we have Rosemary Reynolds' vote to serve, for Rosemary Reynolds to serve on the Executive Board of the Keystone Collaborative. We have a motion.
Motion.
Second. Motion in second to approve the School Committee's recommendation of Rosemary Reynolds to serve on the Executive Board of the Keystone Collaborative. Any questions or comments on the motion? And all approved. And I'll take that as unanimous consent, very good. And finally, before us, the cleanup, 24-400, to adjust action items in our previous meeting, May 20th, 24-384 to 393, 24-385 to 394.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second to amend as stated. Any questions or comments? All approved. Okay, I'll take that as unanimous consent.
Motion for adjournment.
Second.
Motion in second to adjourn, and I'll take that under unanimous consent. And we're adjourned, thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone.